Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the October 26, 2023 Board of Selectment meeting, this time being held in the Cone Room because of the, I don't know what's going on, something's going on in a couple of weeks now and there, they're setting up. Anyway, as always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag is to my right and your left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 12, 2023?
Lauren Rabin, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you. Alrighty, going on to the updates, I'll start with the first selectmen's updates. Last weekend was a weekend of weddings, I had three in about eighteen hours. But the most significant one was the guy on the right over there, we congratulate Ken on his wedding. And then I had run, there was one right after that for Tim Herbst, who is, represents us sometimes in the town attorney's office, a great guy, former mayor of, first selectman of Trumbull. So we wish Timmy and his wife well on their, their new journey. Also want to congratulate the Filia de Rose, which is the Sons of Rose. They celebrated their thirtieth anniversary, had a chance to stop up in Stanford with Mayor Simmons and Senator Fazio. That is a group that represents, was formed thirty years ago from the descendants of Rose Calabria. It's an old mountain town, I see Sam Romeo, I think he may be partly from there, too. And we are very proud of that fact. Greenwich is a sister city, and Rose, there's forty-five hundred people in this mountain town, and there's more people in Cos Cob and Stanford than there is in Rose. So it was great to see everybody there. Also Riverside School, celebrated their ninetieth, one of our favorite events they put on every year at Veterans Day, just a great school and a great community. We continue to look at improving the lives of pedestrians all over, I'm still meeting with, as we speak, with different neighborhoods about how we can improve crosswalks, sidewalks, intersections, that continues. Bruce, Benny Park Cleanup, with my friend Tom McKinney, two o'clock this Saturday, two to four, so hopefully everybody can go there. Pathways is honoring our friends Kendra Farn and Noah Finns this week, hopefully see everybody there, too, I think that's Saturday. Greenwich Greet and Treat, it will be this Sunday at eleven o'clock on the Avenue. The Glenville Forum, we've rescheduled to the thirtieth, that's a busy day because we have that at six o'clock, and then we have to run over for a special meeting with the RTM for Central Middle School at eight o'clock. We're doing the dedication of the Emergency Operations Center for our friend Dan Wurzola, that's going to be on October 1st, more details for that, but Danny, somebody we miss, and uh...
October?
What did I say?
October, you said, so November first?
November, I was just trying to see if you were sleeping. Uh, I'm, thank you. And on the 4th, the Silver Shield Foundation, big event at Todd's Point, our friend Casey Fuchs, Greenwich High graduate, her dad started the Silver Shield Foundation with George Steinbrenner, former owner of the Yankees. And they, they put lots of kids through school whose parents have died in the line of duty. And so it's a big event there, I think Chuck Scarborough usually is the emcee, the Channel Four newscaster and anchor. So that's, on the 4th, it's, if you haven't been there, it's really nice, it's a good, good backdrop to, to where the speakers are, and then, of course, the walk. On the 11th, we have a Greenwich Fire Department Promotion Ceremony, so that will, that's always fun, we'll wish everybody luck there. And of course, the election is on the 7th, so get out there and vote, no matter who you vote for, that's very, very important, and hopefully we'll get those numbers up there to, so we can be proud and get that award again that we won a couple of years ago for voter participation. Thanks, everybody, and I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, well, I don't know what to do about this microphone.
Want mine?
I think if you'd be careful for there, you don't turn into it.
Okay. Oh, it looks like I don't have to just get close to it, sorry, everyone. So my update, we had a meeting with the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to let folks know, there are some October 31 term expirations, and sometimes people have not come forward for renomination, and if you're on a board commissioner committee, you serve until replaced. So even though your term expired, or expires on October 31st, you serve until replaced. So we're getting some interviews through November, and then the plan would be on the December RTM call, because they typically don't meet in November. Fred did mention the special meeting, so as liaison to the Central Middle School Building Committee, I'm actually the Chair of the Communications Subcommittee. So since the BET did approve the appropriation, we've been very busy putting together our talking points for the building committee members so that we could go in front of the committees. The committees are meeting tonight, so unfortunately Janet, Fred, and I will not be able to participate because we have our debate at the Round Hill Association, the Community Center. And then, as Fred mentioned, the RTM meeting will be on Monday, following our Glenville Forum, and that's pretty much my update for today.
Thank you so much, Lauren, good morning, Janet.
Good morning. Likewise, I'm looking forward to our debate tonight, and yes, the next time you see us at a Board of Selectment meeting, we will be past our election, so I'll just take this opportunity to say, you know, if the past is predictive, less than half of registered voters will come out and vote on November 7th, so please do your research and vote, as Fred said, we, we want that town award. If you have questions, I might be biased here, as a past board member and programming chair, but the League of Women Voters has excellent guides, both about, you know, who the candidates are and how the voting for each office works. So I definitely recommend, if you have questions, go to their website. Your vote is your voice, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Janet. So, alright, we're going on old business, we only have two items there. So one is the request for approval of the Harbor Management Commission's 2024 Budget, and our friend Jason is here. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, this is our second reading, following our first reading on, I think, October 12th. Just by way of background, the Harbor Management Committee is charged with the ongoing responsibility of maintaining eight-hundred-and-twenty-two moorings in Greenwich, and our mooring fee here in town is seventy-five dollars, has not been raised in ten years, and is currently about half the price of our neighbors in various communities up and down the Long Island Sound, so we are requesting to raise that fee from seventy-five to one-hundred dollars, and that money will help raise twenty thousand dollars. It will cover a twenty thousand dollar budget shortfall, and will help us retain personnel, it will be for an emergency fund, and most importantly, it will be to help us take out over fifty abandoned moorings in the sound, which are very dangerous to boaters, swimmers, and anyone who's using the waterways.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Yeah, we haven't heard, I haven't heard any, any negative feedback. Usually whenever there's any type of increase, you will get somebody to call, but I have not received one word, and I know the work that you do there is very important, and that money is needed, and I know, again, a shout out to you and the commission, and the new harbor master is just doing great work, cleaning up things and getting things out of the water that we're sticking up, and real, real happy with the work you're doing, so thank you.
Thanks.
I'm just going to repeat, thank you, thank you for all the work that went into this, I haven't heard anything either, I think, I mean, you, you did your homework, so this is, this is great. We're going to vote on the mooring fee increase first and then the budget, just, okay.
What if we first mooring increase, second?
Well, no, I know they're separate, but don't we have, if the budget, to make the budget work, don't we have to vote on the mooring increase, because that's...
Can flip the order of two items or not?
Yes, just, just to be clear, so somebody doesn't complain.
Okay. I motion that we take up item five B prior to five A. Does that, does that work? And we'll vote on the mooring fee increase before we vote on the Harbor Management Commission budget.
Thank you.
And I'll second it, Lauren Rabin.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Good thing it's not a big agenda today. Okay.
You're doing a great pop, Mark.
Not so good, not that good. Anyway, okay, next item then is, so we will now do the request for approval of the Harbor Management's Commission, Commission's 2024 Budget, I mean, mooring, mooring, mooring fees, is there a motion to approve the mooring fees?
Lauren Rabin, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now going on to the budget, is there a motion to approve the 2024 Budget for the Harbor Management Commission?
Lauren Rabin, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, appreciate that, Jason, thanks. All right, going on to the budget, oh, the budget. No, we did, we did, we did, we did. Now we're on new business, yes, don't confuse, I'm confused enough over there. Okay, new business. Request for a temporary closure of the Greenwich Avenue for the Veterans Day Parade, and our friend Peter LeBeau is here, of American Legion Post 29. Good morning, Peter.
Good morning. For those who don't know me, I'm Peter LeBeau, I'm the commander of Greenwich American Legion Post Number 29, which is now a hundred and three years old. And each year that we are, we sponsor an event on Veterans Day, starting with a walk down Greenwich Avenue from Amherst Rowne, down to the World War I monument, which is in front of the old post office, post office, and now the Restoration Hardware Building, where there is a, a World War I monument. Now, Veterans Day used to be called Armistice Day, which signified the date on which the armistice was signed, ending World War I, and it is always held on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month. And it is a very good event, it's well-attended, especially if it is a nice day, and we've been very lucky there. This year, our, we have a theme, and the theme goes beyond just honoring veterans. The federal government has designated 2023 as the official fiftieth anniversary of our departure from Vietnam. I was one of those people that was there, and we're going to talk about the continuing effects, negative effects of the war in Vietnam on the veterans who served there. You've all heard about PTSD, that's one thing, that's very, very prevalent. The other is Agent Orange. Now, when we went to Vietnam, the soldiers and the citizens of this country, we're not told about Agent Orange, and the deadly side effects that could occur. About forty percent of the Vietnam veterans who have died, and that number is about two million, there are only seven-hundred thousand of us left, about forty percent or more have died from Agent Orange-related cancers. This is a travesty that should never have happened in this country. The government knew about the side effects, Dow Chemical, who got the contract to manufacture Agent Orange, knew about the side effects, but they wanted to win the war, so they think, well, we don't know about that, not, a lot of people aren't going to go. So we'll talk about that. But basically, we want, we want the public to know that not only did 2.7 million of us serve, but that seven-hundred thousand of us still suffered the consequences, the unintended, well, maybe they weren't. So if you can, if you can come on Veterans Day, we'd be very grateful. This year, it's on a Saturday, which means we have a lot of children there, and one of the things that I talk about every time I speak at an event, is the fact that most young people, and I'll say young people, twenty years old, or, they don't know about Vietnam, they may have heard about it, but they don't know about it. And Vietnam is tragic and event, it was, it polarized the country in, in a way not seen since the Civil War. And the children need to, it's not taught in our public schools. This was a significant event in the history of this country, and it should be taught in our public schools, and taught the way it happened. To say, oh, I talked to the principal of the school, I won't mention, they wanted me to come and teach there as an adjunct professor, history, American history, and I said, let me see your book, textbook, so I got the textbook, and I went through the textbook, and I called the principal, and I said, there's no mention of Vietnam in your textbook. Oh, she said, no, no, there isn't. I said, can you explain to me why? Well, we don't want to teach the kids about killing. Well, you know, how many, how many, how many major successes, how many major improvements in society have been achieved throughout history by war? It happens, it always will happen. So to say, oh, we don't want to teach our children about, about killing, is a mistake. So the reason I'm here is not to be so long-winded, but we have to, the police department has to close off access for certain streets for us to have our walk down the avenue and the event at the Restoration Hardware. So thank you very much, and I hope you will all come out on September 11th, September 11th, November 11th. Thank you, good day.
Thank you very much, Peter, and I appreciate your service, as always, both wearing the uniform and after. Okay, so I think we do, actually, this is a first read, but...
Yeah, but there's no...
There's no other, so I think this is one where we're going to waive the first read and vote right here, to get this, we do this every year. So I will entertain a motion. Oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
Lauren Rabin, I motion that we approve the request for the road closure, the temporary closure of Greenwich Avenue to, for the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th.
Thank you.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Peter, appreciate that. See you on the 11th. Okay, the last item is discussion to request to purchase town properties at Five Booth Place, 96 Indian Field Road, 98 Indian Field Road, and 47 Glen Avon Drive, and 98 Riverside Avenue, and Peter Bolt is here with us today. Good morning, Peter.
Good morning. Okay, hi, everyone, I'm Peter Bolt, good morning, thanks for letting me get up here and speak in front of you today. I, for those that don't know, I was born and raised in this town, I grew up here, my parents still live here, I moved away and came back to raise my own family here, we live on Lachlan Avenue in Cos Cob. I am an architect, I have my own practice here in town, I also serve on the, on the town's Architecture Review Committee, which I have for the last five years, and the Architecture Review Committee in town is advisory to planning and zoning, and essentially, our responsibility is, what we're tasked with doing there are ensuring that every application for a new building is taking into consideration certain things, relationship to the neighbor, relationship to the built environment, and so forth. So we'll say as a preamble to the things that we're going to talk about this morning, through my experience on that committee and my work as an architect, I'm pretty well-versed in the language of construction and relationships to neighbors, we'll say, and the importance of respecting those, those boundaries. So, in short, what we're going to be looking at today are five properties, which are currently town-owned properties, which sit vacant and have for a very long time. From what I understand, in sending this in to Ken, is that this process of reviewing the potential private purchase of town-owned land has happened before, but a very long time ago, something like forty years ago. And so I, so thank you in advance for kind of going through this process, I know it's going to be a, potentially a long one, or maybe a short one if it doesn't get passed today, but thanks for your patience in kind of sorting it out with me as we go. So with that, let's start, we'll start looking at the five, the five properties that I was, that I want to talk to you about today. The first, there's not a PDF of this that everybody can see, right? No. Okay, I'll keep going, and then for everybody else, they'll be able to see it when it comes up. The, the motivation for this, as an architect on the ARC, given what's going, been going on the last couple of years with 830G and the need for housing in town, a kind of passion project was looking at the zoning map, combing the zoning map, and looking at what properties there were in town that were available, that there wasn't a house on that maybe had been overlooked, or were being underutilized in terms of housing. Of course, that process was in parallel to looking at what land was available for private purchase already, so like a quick Zillow search will show you what those lots are. And so on the first page is a quick breakdown of the privately-owned lots that are available right now for sale, and it's just to demonstrate that those lots, on average, we're talking at like maybe five million dollars per lot, are generally priced out, use-wise, of, of a housing, affordable housing, we'll say, opportunity. There are some in the four-hundred thousand, six-hundred thousand price tag for land, but generally, the privately-owned lots are not appropriate for development of affordable housing units. And so, in my research, what I turned up were five units that are currently owned by the town that do satisfy, or are more attractive, we'll say, to a financial model that would promote an affordable housing development project. So there are five that we're going to look at, four of them are specifically for, for affordable housing, one is not affordable housing, would be for private development, and is a much more sensitive site, but I bring it up for the committee to kind of review anyway, because it's an interesting piece of land that's owned by the town, and I'm not sure if the town's aware that they own it. So, we'll look at that one first, actually, which is 7 Glen Avon Drive, it's not actually 7, it's not, doesn't have an address, there's a parcel number, but you'll see it in the PDF in front of you. This is on Glen Avon Drive in Riverside, which is a...
So this is going to be a problem, everything, people online are not going to see this, I have to share the YouTube video, so I'm sharing, I just realized, now I'm no longer sharing YouTube videos, so anyone online is getting a chance to see it. So I can share this in this room, but it's no longer being recorded on soon, because I'm no longer getting a live feed from...
If we can do, if we can keep last tomorrow, we can do it, put the link to this, and there are people who can get a chance to see it.
That's the thing, you're going to describe it, and, because it's, so I'm going to go back to sharing YouTube, because this is how we're recording the meeting, I apologize, this is like, this has never happened before, so...
I mean, it's a first read, anyway, and there's a lot of people going to have questions, anyway. I know twenty, over twenty years ago, when I was on the Harvard Board, I was on a committee to look at a lot of these properties, I don't think the town did anything with any of them, but I know a lot of them are, that aren't even on here.
You're, you're... I'm sorry, this is a kind of perfect...
Anyway, so we'll just, let's just move ahead, because you just got a lengthy presentation.
Because I could also print next up and bring them back up.
Let's just, let's just roll that.
Hello?
Okay, Peter, I...
Okay. So I'm just going to describe, I'll describe the five properties. The first one on Glen Avon Drive is, would be for private development, not for an affordable housing project, given its location, the value of the land, and so forth. But just to describe in objective terms this lot, it's on Glen Avon Drive in Riverside, which is owned, R20 single-family, minimum of twenty thousand square feet, lot size. This is already a non-conforming lot, it's much smaller than the adjacent lots. You know, variances would be required, it's complicated for many reasons, but the point is that it's an attractive, it's a, it's a beautiful piece of publicly-owned land that would, could potentially make for a beautiful private development. Beyond those, the next four that I want to talk to you about are more appropriate for affordable housing development. And so the next slide that you'll look at is taken out of the Greenwich Housing Development, or Affordable Housing Plan, as the four core goals of that plan, and let me back up just for one second and say that the, another application that's come before you recently takes one of, maybe two tracks at affordable housing development, and that's the application on Strickland Road, which I know is also going on town, or is proposed to potentially go in on town-owned land. And that, I live right around the street from that, I think that's a really interesting proposal. But kind of, in terms of type, or in terms of strategy, that is a multi-unit development on a single piece of land. An alternative strategy is called infill housing development, which is, which you, it sounds like maybe you're aware of, or from the looks, you're aware of this, but just to kind of get it out there, the idea of infill housing is, instead of putting high density on a single site, you're infilling single units or multifamily units, yeah, you guys know. And so that's essentially what these next four properties are about, is infill housing on lots in town that are appropriate for this kind of development, but that are scattered, scattered across town, and therefore, kind of in keeping with the four items on the Affordable Housing Plan's four core goals, which is preserving land use patterns, because it's single-family or multifamily in zones that are zoned that way. We'll say respectful of environmental and infrastructure challenges, in that they're not putting huge load on those infrastructures that are in place at those sites. They are close, and they were specifically chosen for this presentation because of their proximity to public transportation, either the trains or to bus lines, all of them are within a quarter mile of a, of a bus stop. And in terms of quick and economically efficient, these are all much smaller than large units, they don't require as much site work as large development, and so they're able to be developed more quickly. So the next slides maybe are irrelevant, given the nods that you just gave me about your understanding of infill housing, but they're just demonstrating as a strategy the difference between large lots, single development versus scattered site development, a diagram for reference. And so then, and so now we'll look at the four. We have one, which is in Riverside, two, which are in Cos Cob, and a third, which is down by Armstrong Court in Western Greenwich. So the first that we're going to look at is on Riverside Lane, I have it marked as 98, it doesn't have an official number, somebody that I just spoke with said it might also be called, kind of informally, Two Riverside Lane. This is a property on Riverside Lane that is a, I think it's called a flag lot, so there's a skinny driveway currently unmarked, it's not a driveway now, it's a grass spit twenty feet wide that leads back to a lot that is kind of a courtyard lot between many other existing homes. Like the rest of these, there are some zoning peculiarities that would need to be ironed out in order to push this forward more seriously, but on the sheet in front of you, you'll see the, that they're on-town sewer, there's access to, easy access to electrical lines, and there's plenty of square footage to accommodate, of the lot, to accommodate setbacks, and still provide plenty of housing on the lot. So what I'm calling 98 Riverside Lane is the first one. The second two, what I'm calling 96 and 98 Indian Field Road, are the first two lots, if you get off of Exit Four, and, and you head, head towards Putnam, the first two lots on the left side after you cross over the train tracks. There have been two lots that have been developed there just beyond those recently, these are currently wooded areas, not even a buffer to the train there, because there's not a lot of tree coverage in that area, but significantly sized lots that are sitting empty that could easily be connected to Indian Field Road there, easy's not the right word, but could be connected to Indian Field Road with, with proper consideration. Those are budding lots, you know, if there was, if this, if this was to... Those are budding lots, you know, if there was, if this, if this was to move forward, there would be potential for those two lots to be joined, to, to put multiple, possibly three units or four units on those two properties. I think that's a question for further down the road. But as an introduction to those two properties, that's ninety-six and ninety-eight Indian Field. There are square footages on your document that shows the size of the, a potential house that might go there, or multiple units. And then the last property is, that I'm presenting to you today is what I'm calling Five Booth Place. Booth Place is just north, northeast of Armstrong Court, easy access to the bus routes that serve Armstrong Court, on a piece of land which backs up into the forest. The forest in turn backs up to Christiano Field and the, and the recycling center in town, the Greenwich Dump. This is a, an incredibly large piece of land directly adjacent to an affordable housing complex that already has been built in town, that seems to have been kind of overlooked or, or not considered. And so, this is a really attractive location, given its proximity to, like I said, Armstrong Court. That should be worth consideration, partly, in large part because it's also by itself on the side of the street, and so you don't have immediate neighbors adjacent. The following five sheets are the property cards for each one of these. For more information, I've done some basic due diligence with DPW, inland wetlands, zoning, and it seems as though all of these are perfectly viable as candidates, but they've just kind of been hidden in the record, and so here I am bringing them before you. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Yeah, the good news is, I, I know Greenwich Communities is doing this already with the scattered site. In fact, right around the corner from where you live, where the, the idea is to, to put so, development over on the surface parking lot, the adjacent neighbor is actually the Greenwich Housing Authority or Greenwich Communities. So, that's, that's, that's a philosophy that's been in play for a while, and you're absolutely right, it's, it's not the old method, when Armstrong Court was built in the fifties, when they thought that everything had to go all together, so it also incorporates people into the community. You don't even know they're there sometimes, it's, it's, you can't even differentiate. I, Booth Place, I don't know, Sam Romeo is here from Greenwich Communities, I don't know if, if you've looked at that, Sam, that piece of property, but it's good that you brought this up because I was not aware of it. And some of the other ones, I, I know, if you, you probably were out of town at this point, but about fifteen years ago, there was a parcel land on Riverside Lane, and it had a skinny little piece of grass, and it went to this little, little piece of property. And it's town-owned, it's still town-owned, and the neighborhood kids, one of whom was, went to the wedding last week, they decided to take it over and they made it a little Fenway Park, baseball field. And it became a beautiful little thing, they had advertisements, they had local businesses there, they landscaped it, they even hired people, they pulled their, they, you know, pulled their money from their chores and they actually hired workers to come down and help them, landscaped the, the baseball field. It became controversial, a couple of neighbors didn't like it, and, and it was something new, because they were used to something being, nothing being there. But that, that was something that I don't, the town still owns it, but that was something, again, that they, they were even making a movie on this thing, on that wiffle ball field, it was pretty funny and partly controversial, but I don't remember how many more of these, but there was a significant amount of properties back in two thousand, I believe, when I was, this committee I was on with...
Eighty-seven.
Eighty, about eighty-seven properties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One out of eighty-seven, I'm trying to remember.
Okay, so that, that shows you, but the one over on Glen Avon, that seems something like, one of the neighbors, I'm surprised, has not offered to buy that and add it to their, you know, the neighboring properties. That would seem like the thing to do there, but, oh, okay.
I just had a comment when you tried to interrupt me.
Oh, sure, yeah, you can, I'll...
Or come, should you come here?
If you can come to the microphone.
Yeah, just come, just introduce yourself.
Thank you.
So, I have a question to Jim, maybe, or, I'll wait.
Hi. I am here actually on behalf of the, oh, yes, my name's Christina Oka, and I am here on behalf of the Glen Avon Community, as there would be potential opposition and upset to the sale, as that plot of land is used multiple times a day by many people in the community and the surrounding streets, and it's really important to us all.
Okay, no, thank you, yeah, I was just wondering, because sometimes, looking at something like that, if it says it's non-conforming, it would, I think sometimes has the potential of upsetting the, the, you know, the character of that, of the neighborhood. So, I was going to ask, that was going to be another question, if it's used at all, like the other one became...
Throughout the day, all day long, you see tons of people on it, children, people walking their dogs, people having picnics, it's really like a tiny park for the neighborhood, and it's sort of one of the gems of Glen Avon.
There's, there was a similar one in one of the private associations, that they, it was woodsy for, for decades, and they recently cut it, and it became a little park for them, and it was, doesn't belong to anybody, so it's probably the same idea that you're practicing over there.
Yes, and I think also for people that live on Club Road, which is super busy, it's not very walkable for people with young families, or just people that don't want to be around fast cars, it's nice for a lot of the surrounding neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Lauren?
Yes, you can. So, Peter, I see a lot of folks from Planning and Zoning, I see Margarita and Peter Lowe on. What's the relationship, since your advisory to Planning and Zoning, I am the Board of Selectment liaison to the Affordable Housing Trust Board, so we, as part of our activity, looked at town-owned properties to see what could be developed for affordable housing, so I'm just trying to understand the relationship, who's the purchaser? I'm looking for more of like, the big picture.
Sure. I think, two-part answer, if I understood you correctly, I'll say that, first of all, I'm here not as a, a member of ARC, I'm here as a private individual who's an architect, developer, who's interested in these parcels of land, eighty percent of them, as a, as a way of doing something interesting to help the, for, an affordable housing issue in town. So, that's kind of my motivation for coming here.
So, you're the purchaser?
You can say that I'm the purchaser. I don't think they're at a stage yet where I would be able to actually claim that title, because there's nothing to be purchased yet. And so, really what this is about is shedding light on land that is open, that is available to the town, and on a technique that I think is worth considering or reviewing more closely, because I know it's been brought up before, but I think it needs kind of fresh light, and there might be sites like Glen Avon which are really not appropriate for this conversation, but there are others that I think will be churned up that will be appropriate. This five, like Sam just mentioned, are, are part of a much longer list. There's town-owned land, there's other land that I've turned up in my own research that would be kind of appropriate to review in, in further meetings, but this is really just a small batch of a much larger catalog of properties that the town could be reviewing. Does that answer it?
Relationship to Affordable Housing Trust?
Oh, no, no, for, no relationship between myself and the Affordable Housing Trust, again, only personal interest in developing housing as an architect who's coming in a different, with a different set of skills than developers might traditionally come at these projects. This is kind of part of a much larger niche movement that I'm part of, which is architects taking on developer work and designing and building much more sensitive projects in lots, yeah. That's it.
Thank you. So, I have a lot of questions, but, but before I ask my questions, I just want to preface this and say, yes, the town absolutely needs more affordable housing, so I applaud you for thinking creatively, out of the box. Absolutely, infill projects have been proven to be very successful, because we want, we want families who are in affordable housing to be part of our community's fabric. So, so that as a, as a concept, I think is great. But that said, I have a lot of questions, because there are properties that are vacant because they simply haven't been developed yet, and there are properties that are vacant because really they shouldn't be developed. I would definitely want some sort of briefing from Public Works, from our Conservation Commission, from Planning and Zoning, to understand why these properties have not, at this point, been developed. I would also be intrigued to understand kind of what the options are, like why, why would the town not lease these properties to, to Greenwich Communities, for Greenwich Communities to develop? So, I, I do have a lot of questions, I'm not sure that they would all be answered in the next two weeks before we meet again.
Thank you, and I know Sam Romeo could probably answer some of them, as I said, and I would agree, I think some of the properties are not, have been built upon for a reason. And again, we did put a committee together twenty-something years ago, and Sam said it was eighty-seven, and only one was purchased, so they're, it's not really, they're not all slam dunks.
For sure.
Certainly, they, you know, if there's a vacant piece of land, I could tell you from past history, and I can give you examples, the minute someone wants to develop it, those neighbors who normally were looking at open space don't like it. And sometimes, you know, there's been some pretty big battles over that, so, but some of them maybe do, maybe, you know, looking at it again, maybe we could convene another committee going forward. Certainly, I think that's, that's a good thing to look at and say, maybe there is something there that fits, that could fit in with Sam's vision, because Greenwich Communities really is our number-one tool to get to that ten percent, to, to take away the, the hammer from the developers, they're using a law that over, that circumvents local zoning. So, that is our goal, and also, while we're doing that, is to, to make these units really nice, like doing at Armstrong Court. And really, it's, it's a win-win for everybody, so I think, you know, I know, Sam, you raised your hand, and the gentleman in the back would go on deck, but Sam, you, you had your hand raised?
We have two ones, you have to answer them.
Okay, we're, let's, we're going to hit the people here first, though. Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, Sam Romeo, Chairman of the Greenwich Communities. The Glen Avon property was proposed for sale some thirty years ago under the Marenon administration, and it came before the Board of Selectment, it also went before the RTM, but before it got to the RTM, the item was pulled, for a number of reasons. First of all, it was going to be sold for seven thousand dollars, and it was going to be purchased by the adjacent property owner, who was, would have complete access to the harbor, Cos Cob Harbor. Right now, I agree with the lady from Glen Avon Drive, that it's well-used by the residents, and it does have public access to Greenwich Harbor, or Cos Cob Harbor, and I think it should remain as public open space, because that's what we want to do, is keep the green and vintage. So, I, I would be adverse to having that property sold, especially if it has public access to Cos Cob Harbor. The, the other thing, the Riverside Lane property, which was the old Green Monster, the kids, and I was involved in that some twenty-five years ago, and the kids were having a great time there, and one neighbor opposed, and actually, he was using part of the property that belonged to the town as his driveway, and when it was all investigated, he had to move his driveway, because be careful what you pay for. But on that site, there is a large drain that takes the flow from the property right down to the Myeranis River. So, there's a, a large drain, pretty much in the center, that the kids used to play around it. But it is accessible, and it could be built, there could be some housing put in there, and like that is a open space and greenery, and certainly Greenwich Communities would be interested in it. So, I, I, I put that on it. The one that's most interesting to me is the Booth Court one, which really butts our property. It's the town-owned property, it, it's right there where the brook is, and the town dump is there. But also, the neighbors on Booth Court and Booth Place have a little bit of green in their neighborhood, that's the only green that's there. If Greenwich Communities would, to get a lease on that, we could incorporate it into our Armstrong Court property, however, but we also could keep it as green space, and use the FAR for development on our other site, and also enhance the neighborhood and give the, the benefit of the greenery to the neighbors that live in the area. So, I would definitely want to be involved in any consideration for, for Booth Place and Riverside Lane. And again, like I say, I totally in favor of keeping Glen Avon as open space controlled by the town and not consider putting that up on a block for sale.
Thank you, Sam, and you bring up a great point, which is with the daily, you know, the, the yearly flooding issue that we have, we're very, very concerned about adding impervious surface, so that's another thing about, you know, a, a reason to keep green space. Greenwich has been always known for that, and we love to, to make sure that, that, you know, those neighborhoods, especially Booth Court, that, that's a good point, I hadn't even thought of that, is, you know, they, they're on, off of HAMAV, and you got the, the Christiano Field, as Peter said, and, and the dumps there, but it's nice to have some green space for people, and I think, you know, I would, I would be very careful about developing, but maybe we, there is something, the fact that Peter brought this here, maybe we could incorporate it, you know, do a deal with Greenwich Communities, and you can incorporate it as green space, that would be really good, so, thank you, Peter, for alerting us to that. But going forward, I do think that maybe we should keep this conversation going, Peter, because maybe there are some, some properties there that could be better used. Again, we always keep it in mind about the, the flooding issue. Our, our infrastructure is over a hundred years old, all towns are going through this, and it was never built to withstand all the development we've had, so we're very, very, you know, conscious of that, but certainly, this is a good, a good conversation, and we may have something good coming from this, just from your presentation. So, I...
Is that the people on, on speaking?
Sure, well, there's a gentleman that had, raised his hand in the back, so, thank you, sir. And then, those two people...
Two people on the Zoom.
And then two people, and then we could, we'll wrap this issue up, but...
There's nothing on the table to vote on, obviously.
Okay.
Good morning, I'm Lloyd Gravenyard, I live on Glen Avon Drive, G-R-A-V-E-N-G-A-A-R-D. I've lived there for forty years, I probably used that park almost every other day, or if not every day, when I had a dog. It's my understanding that when you built the new police tower in Bruce Park, that you officially designated that as a park and did a swap, so that you didn't lose any parkland when you built that. Nobody seems to have mentioned that, has that changed? And I address that to the committee.
Sure.
But it's my understanding that it is officially a park, and I would think that you would want to keep as much green space park as you can, especially if it's waterfrontage. It gives everybody on, in that general area, access to sort of walk over to the, to the water. The other thing is that, living there for forty-some years, I've seen virtually everybody on the block use that, that park facility, and it's, it would be irreplaceable, and I think that putting up some little structure there, it's, and I know that the, the co-owners wanted to buy it, and there was an outrage by the, all of the neighbors in the community, letters written, committee hearings, all of that, and so, I, I, I think it would happen all over again. So, thank you for, for taking my comments.
Thank you very much, yes, you and Sam are on the same page with your recollections of what happened a few years ago. Okay, but I think this has been a, a good discussion, and we'll definitely, should definitely, you know, follow up with that, that property, and, and Peter, maybe we could just chat going forward and, and look at lists, and go over it together and see, see what we can do. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Are you able to recognize them to speak? Or Dawn, Dawn wants to speak?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not the host.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dawn lives, Dawn is a resident there, and I know Sam probably just, men stated her, her position on this one, but she does live on that, that street there, in that area. But, let me see, you know, I can, I can, I, Dawn, if, Dawn...
Jenny and I were the hosts.
Don, do you want to call my cell, and I'll just put your, your, my phone up to the, to the microphone?
You are the host.
Yeah, I, I know, I don't...
I'm trying to look at your computer.
Control, scare, that shit. This is Jennifer.
Probably in order for her to talk.
Right, we're allowed, Dawn, Dawn-
We figured it out.
Okay.
Dawn, can you unmute and speak? Dawn, can you hear us? I can't, can anyone else hear her, or am I just getting on my headphones?
No, do you have to unmute her?
She's unmuted. Yeah, she, apparently she's coming into my screen.
Dawn, Ken needs to put the mic down by your, hold on a second, I don't think anyone there can hear us, the mic needs to be put down near the, the front of the host computer, just give me a second, I'm trying to reach Lauren and Ken.
You got, we can hear you, Jenny.
It'd be easier for me to call Fred's phone, and he can put it up to the microphone.
We can hear you right now, Dawn.
That's what he's doing.
Dawn, we can hear Dawn, we can hear you right now.
We can hear you, Dawn.
They can hear you online, but they can't hear you in the room, so, give me one more chance, I'm trying, I might just, I'm just, I'm just gonna try calling one-
Everybody, everybody, timeout.
There we go, I think they've turned it on, okay, now, can you hear me? Wait, hang on a minute. Okay, you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
It's got Verizon, can you hear me now?
Technology.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, that's, I know.
Yes.
Yes, Dawn, we can hear you.
Oh, it's delayed.
Dawn, this is good, just, you could use this, and just use my, I'll use my phone, you're, this is Dawn Fortunato, floor is yours, Dawn.
All right, good morning, everybody, so, I understand that Mr. Bolt wants to develop in all of these various areas, I would implore him to do some due diligence.
You could use this, and, I'll use my phone. This is Dawn Fortunato.
This is Dawn Fortunato.
Okay, we get-
Floor is yours, Dawn. All right, can everybody hear me?
Good morning, everybody.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, we're listening to you, there's an echo, and it's repeating, but just go ahead, we hear you.
Yeah, it's delayed, so, Mr. Bolt, a lot of these areas are met with a lot of opposition, I would implore you to do due diligence before moving, trying to move forward, or attempting to move forward on any of this, like Mr.-
Go ahead, we're listening to you, there's an echo, and it's repeating, but just go ahead, we hear you.
Yeah, it's delayed.
All right, okay, go ahead, go ahead, Dawn.
So, a lot of these areas are super-sensitive areas, because there's contaminants on these properties, I know the Housing Authority, and if anybody got the property, I'd rather see it go to the Housing Authority, who's really making serious strides-
Go ahead, go ahead, Dawn.
-to the low-income housing deficiencies that we have, where it's not ten percent, they're using all of their units to really make an impact for our town, to lower the number that we're supposed to be at, and as Sam said, this is the only green space, if you looked around on the western side of town, we lack green space, we have a field at Hamilton Avenue School, that is not of recreational size for the kids to play on, we have the softball field that abuts the dump, and we have this little patch of green space that you are trying to develop on, or would like to develop on, we have neighbors that walk their dog down there, so, if you were to build there, you would take that away from us, and we'd be left with nothing, every time somebody builds, another person floods, we're tired of flooding also, we'd like our neighborhood left the way that it is, but I implore you to do due diligence and do your homework, because if you have the history of a lot of these properties, that you're discuss, that you're discussing here today, probably would realize it's not the place to be building, thank you.
Dawn, thank you very much, appreciate it.
That is it, so.
Okay, yeah, it's, thank you, it's, yeah, I think it's, some of the themes there are the same with the flooding and the impervious surface, but I do think this, by bringing it up, it was an opportunity, you presented an opportunity for us that we hadn't even thought of, Sam, for, Sam Romeo, for a second time, and then-
Can I?
Absolutely.
I think, too, not only about presenting the opportunity, but the way to develop them, so, coming from the architectural, you know, point of view, to develop something that works within the fabric of where the development is occurring, so I applaud you for that idea, and that, bringing that forward.
Yeah, I guess you all can hear me, but, one thing I'd like to say about 830G.
They can't hear you online.
All right, okay, Greenwich Communities, when they develop, they develop one hundred percent of their units are affordable, not thirty percent or ten percent, one hundred percent of all of them, so, if there's any property that's available, that the town wants to, you know, get rid of, or move on, it should be with Greenwich Communities, because back in nineteen eighty-nine, also, the Greenwich Housing Authority, in a vote of the RTM, was designated as the site planner for the town of Greenwich, so, any of these properties and communications should be coming through the Housing Authority as the designated site developer, and again, I could say, the 830G, we take the biggest bite of the apple when we develop our units, our quality units, we don't skimp on anything that we do, if you've seen some of our projects that we've done around town, you realize that, and the residents all know that, you know, we put them first, and we want to give them a quality, better life than they had, and we're doing that, and moving forward, like I say, any property that does come available, we should have first considerations to take that hammer out of the hand of those developers with our hundred percent affordability, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Sam, and thanks for all you do, you are number-one tool that we use to, to promote affordable housing, but also to keep the state at bay.
Well, and I just want to add to that, that 830G only requires that there's a deed restriction for forty years, so after forty years, we would-
Back this way, watch.
Right, we would lose, well, we would have development, but then it would become private development.
Thank, thank you, yes, all good points, and we can add a few more, but I think everybody gets the point that 830G is not a good thing for any town, and certainly, what you're doing there is, is good for everybody, it's a win-win, but this, this has been a great discussion, and we, I think we've got a possibility here, so, we'll continue this, and thank you so much again, Peter, for, and Sam, for your, your comments, public comment period, do we see anybody whose hands up, more, one more, Mr. Wald, identify, identify yourself at the podium.
Thank you. My name is David Wald, and I just follow up from last meeting, and since Veterans Day and the closing of the Greenwich Avenue, I would like to again, put forward a proposal to put up the POW MII flag at Town Hall, and also at the veterans' flagpoles that we have in town.
Thank you, and so I did follow up with Attorney McGeechy, right after that, and the answer was the same, that we, we passed a, an ordinance by a vote of, I think it was like three reads, that going forward, right now, it's gonna, starting January first, bring those proposals there, we'll have a vote on it, obviously, that one's gonna pass unanimously, no matter what, but, right now, we can't entertain any more, you know, entertain any more new proposals, because we're getting, we were still getting them, and we said, no, that's why we put this proposal in place, like we explained for the three meetings in a row, that this was done to protect the town, it was advised that the town adopt the policy, that's why we did it, so going for, everything we've, we've raised before, we'll just get a quick vote in January of each year, and they're all good, but the new ones, this would be a new one, would have to, any new, any new proposal would have to come before us for a first read, and there'll be a vote, you know, after two weeks of public input, the POW one, absolutely, that's, that's a no-brainer, you've mentioned some other ones, but absolutely bring them forward in January, appreciate that, David.
Could I?
Yes, but that's, again, we-
Do you still have the microphone?
Go ahead, David.
I would just like, I would just like to repeat what I said, or previously, currently, the town is flying the flag at town property, I'm just saying-
Yes, and so your, your question the last time was, one of your questions was, was the, the other areas, was the flag policy we adopted just for Town Hall, or does, like say, over at Byron Park, or Strazza Field, or Morlot Park, where there's a flagpole, and Attorney McGeechy confirmed that the flag policies for every single town property, it's not just for here, so that's why, again, in January, bring all the proposals that you want, you want us to consider, and you'll, you'll absolutely get that vote, and I think you're gonna be, you know, you'll have no, no opposition at all for the POW flag, that's for sure, but, any other ones, certainly, anybody in, in the town is, is able to come there, present, we'll have a first read, listen to some public feedback, and then have a vote in two weeks, but that's why we did this, so, it's only a few weeks away, it's January one.
I know it's a few weeks, but I, I just feel it's very important, you're flying the Israeli flag, and I applaud, I am very much favored, we keep that in people's mind, but we also have American hostages, prisoners of war.
No, again, I know, we went over this over and over again, I don't, it's every week, I told you, and explained to you, that we have a policy in place now, and we explained to you the reason why, whenever there's an incident, like we did with Ukraine last year, and the town raised a flag, and it will come down again, those are, those are one-offs, they're not, those are not something we do, as the policy said, we do every year on a certain date, that's what the, you have to read the policy, but again, I went back to the attorney again, and asked again, all of your questions, so, come in January first, and we'll, we'll get all those voted on for you, okay, but the POW one would, you know, that would be a, that's, be a layup, but, of course, that should be flown all over on any town property, but, and we could do it, and make sure it's done on a regular basis, whenever, you know, the, it falls on the calendar, but, again, the one-offs here, you know, you just don't know what's gonna happen, it's like when someone dies who was in service, the flag gets lowered, right, we don't know when that's gonna happen, but it's not a yearly thing on a yearly date, that's what I've been trying to explain, so, I did follow up with Attorney McGeechy, who did a lot of work on this, and she said, stick to January first, because we, again, we were getting more and more requests for flags, that there may not have been the agreement that there's gonna be on the POW one, right, some flags are not, you know, they're not, they're not, you know, they could be a little bit controversial, some of them, that's why you want to discuss it first, so, but thank you, I really appreciate that, we have, I think we have one nomination. Oh, here, I'm sorry.
I'm just up here.
Fifteen push-ups.
I know, I need the exercise, okay, so, Lauren Raven, I motioned that we re-nominate Ann Alexander as a returning alternate member in Position A1 to the Historic District Commission, for a term expiring October 31st, 2028.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All's in favor, Fred Camillo's, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you very much, thanks, everybody, for bearing with us today, we're in a new room, do we have, we have one more?
No, you don't need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I was gonna get to that.
So that's why I'm standing here.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, anyway, thank you, everybody, for coming today, thank you, Ken, thank you, Jenny, thank you, Dawn, and seeing no other comments or questions, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All's in favor, Fred Camillo's, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thanks, everybody, have a good day.